Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners is called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Please wait for a participant to join the meeting.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the river father of the righteous trans one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, are we adjourned by anyone of our way today?
Is there anyone joining us by the? Okay, we are not.
Thank you very much. Under Item 5, we'll see the schedule of upcoming meetings. We do call your attention to the fact there is no Commissioners' Work Session next Tuesday on Election Day, nor will be a business session on Thursday, May 18th, due to a lack of a forum that day. Commissioners receive--
Recording.
--draft copies of the meeting minutes from April 25th and 27th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Webster, I'll make the motion.
She usually goes first. So I will second.
Thank you. Those in favor placing the flag by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved and we'll move on to Item 7, which is public comment. And so the meeting is open for that at this time. Sheriff Watt.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for a few minutes just for clarification for some things. So under public comment, I felt it was important, just for clarification, because it sounds like there's confusion out, on the steps that were taken for the front door security and the safety of the building and the changeover from access, more directly so with the Bar Association than the majority of the others. This whole topic started back pre-COVID and started in the Safety Committee meetings, or Security Meetings, and of course COVID hit, it delayed it. The new handbook came into play, where it was being rolled out into May, the 1st of May to start out in the handbook. It also prescribed what IDs are going to be approved and authorized or recognized. Throughout the process and the steps of this, the confusion comes in, at least on my part, I'm a little confused on all that were involved, that had parts in it, or the offices that were involved, and namely with the Commissioners' Office, the President Judge, my office, HR. A decision was made, after getting correspondence back and forth, that it was going to be the IDs only that are authorized through that handbook. It's the newest form of IDs we have, and they weren't an employee, we weren't going to have them go around screening, they were going to have to be screened at the front door. That notice was prepared in a letter and sent out on April 28th, with the cooperation with Chief Clerk Heminger, who helped me with that letter, who was speaking on behalf of the Commissioners Board, or at least acting on the behalf of that office. I'm understanding that there's been put out there that the Commissioners' Office was not aware of this. So the confusion on my part is, I'm not sure where this got cloudy, but just for clarity, that the steps in the process and the decision that was made for that front door came through meetings and decisions that included this board, and that we acted on that based on the discussions, including opportunities to discuss other options. It was indicated that the decisions for the front door and the access fell on my shoulders or my office's shoulders. If that be the case, then I will certainly be glad to sit down with the Bar Association and see if there's alternatives that we had proposed anyways, to take a look at to try and help them. Again, clarity, and the letter is very clear in it, that was sent to the Bar, there's a couple members sitting on the Board of Commissioners that received those letters. Where it's understood that it became directed at me and the Commissioners' Office had nothing in it, certainly confuses me, because that's not correct and it does not appear to be accurate. I appreciate your time, and anybody that would like a letter that was sent to the Bar, I'd be glad to provide it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Watt. Is there any other public comment?
Kay Stevens for the Altoona Mirror. I'll just add my two cents that, yeah, I was wondering too about this decision, only because it also affects me, and I lost my badge as well. And I can tell you that I've been coming through those front doors a lot longer than a lot of county employees, and I will say the Sheriff's Department has treated me very well, but I think that you gave the Sheriff's Department a lot of work to do by making this decision.
Thank you, Kay. Is there any other public comment? All right, we'll move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Webster.
Thank you. Next week is Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week, but since we're not having a meeting next week, I just want to make my comments regarding that today. Chris Cosgryff, the founder of Officer Down Memorial Page, stated, "When a police officer is killed, it's not an agency that loses an officer, it's an entire nation." In 1962, President Kennedy designated May 15th each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week encompassing May 15th as National Police Week. This year, that week will begin on Monday. During this week, we honor those officers that paid the ultimate sacrifice while protecting their communities. While honoring line-of-duty deaths, it is a reminder of the dangers that officers face, and that brave men and women put their lives at risk in service to their communities. Here in Blair County, we have a memorial outside of the front of the courthouse. It recognizes the deaths of eight Blair County officers who died in the line of duty. We all should recognize the sacrifices of those officers. This year alone, Pennsylvania has lost three officers in the line of duty. I am thankful for the officers who serve. I hope we all take time to honor the officers lost and show our appreciation for our officers currently serving. May God bless and protect our law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webster. Commissioner Burke.
Thank you. This morning, I wanted to express my sorrow at the passing of Dr. Carol Osgood suddenly on Sunday. It's quite a shock, some of us saw him on Saturday, spoke with him, but he was not just a surgeon, but also a pillar of this community and a philanthropist. He had a great effect on my family personally. He removed brain tumors from both my mother-in-law and sister-in-law, so certainly without his expertise, my life and life of my children would be very different. He gave greatly to our local YMCA, and also relevant to the county, was a member of the Prison Society. And his experience working with patients with traumatic brain injury and seeing a lot of them develop either mental health issues or issues with their cognitive function that led to criminal behavior really informed his involvement on the Prison Society and his advocacy for programming and diversionary programs. So I hope to continue honoring Dr. Osgood with some of my work and some of the initiatives we're trying to pursue here. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great loss to the community for its professional contributions to his philanthropic ones and his volunteer landscape, who's also on the advisory board of the Blair Dragon alcohol programs, who's been active in our reentry coalition, who just really spent his retirement years serving that mission. So thank you for recognizing him. I don't suppose I need to remind anybody that Election Day is next Tuesday, and just want to give you a status report on the mail-in ballots. As of last night, 5,779 applications have been sent out, and 5,768, excuse me, 5,779 applications have been received, 5,768 ballots have been mailed out, and 2,585 ballots have been returned. Today is the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot, and mail-in ballots must reach the election office by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day next Tuesday. We'll move on at this point in time to a special presentation, and we have with us Andrea Cohen and Melanie Schultz from Lakemont Park, so good morning. Goodbye, love them.
Good morning. Thank you. I have calls in the event operating center for you all.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and give you an update on the park for this operating season. We actually, I'm going to start with the operating schedule, just to go through how our hours are going to look for this season. We kicked off our season on April 1st with our community egg hunt in partnership with Central Blair Rec, and that was a really successful event. April, we were open Tuesday through Friday from 4:30 to 8:00, and then Saturdays and Sundays from 11:30 to 8:00, when Mother Nature was cooperating with us for batting cages and golf. And our rides actually opened this past Saturday on May 6th, and they will remain open weekends through the end of May, and our summer hours will go, will start June 5th. So beginning the week of June 5th, we'll be closed on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Our batting cages, go-karts, and golf will be open from 4:30 until 9:00 p.m., and then Thursday through Sunday, all of our attractions will be open from 11:30 until 9:00 p.m. A couple private rentals to note, we did attract the Homer Center Prom After Prom Party at the park, that is this Friday, into very early Saturday morning, midnight to 4:30. They normally go to the Gateway Clipper, and last year, one of their students was at Altoona's After Prom and went back to the school and said, "We really think we need to go to Lakemont Park next year." And so they will be coming this Friday, and then as always, Altoona's After Prom. We will be holding Summer Fest on the Lake again this year, that is August 18th, 19th, and 20th. We will be partnering with Imaginarium Sanitarium for a new Haunted House event at the park this fall. It will begin September the 29th, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, beginning September the 29th, and it will run through the last Sunday of October, so October 29th. Imaginarium Sanitarium will be setting up a walk-through haunted house attraction on our go-kart track. That side of the park is the only side of the park where we don't have lights, so in an effort to continue with the setup for holiday lights on the lake, we will be using that side of the park. They will operate our Tin Lizzie Anti-Gado Cars with a little attraction in there, and then our Keystone Falls Mini Golf Course as well, so that patrons have something to do while they're waiting for the haunted house. We're super excited to partner with them, we know that we've been missing that opportunity, so to be able to partner with them and bring that to the community, it will take a family-friendly approach, classic monster theme, no blood, guts, and gore, so we're excited to bring that. And then Holiday Lights on the Lake will open November the 17th, our Holiday Market will be the 18th, and we will run through January 7th of 2024. So then very quickly, to highlight our events, we did have to reschedule our pet day due to rain, so this past Saturday, we held a yard sale day, it was very, very successful. The park was extremely busy all day long, which was very refreshing to see. I would estimate probably at least 1,000 to 1,500 people in the park on Saturday. And then Sunday, we had Pet Day, the weather didn't cooperate tremendously with us, but we were able to get the event in. This Saturday, we're partnering with Family Resource Center of the United Way of Blair County for the Week of the Young Child Celebration, very excited to have them back at the park, hosting an International Food Day on the 27th, and then just honoring vets on Memorial Day that they ride free. The 3rd, we are celebrating Leap the Dips 121st Birthday. The 10th, we will do Let's Move Blair County Day, Adventure Fest, as well as Touch a Truck and the IU 8 St. Rocks Camp. Touch a Truck was a huge event last year, we anticipate it will be a very well-attended event this year. We have a variety of heavy equipment, first responders, semi-trucks, and I hired Optimus Prime of the Transformers movies to be there for a couple appearances as well. And then on the 23rd, we're trying something new, an adult-only After Hours Glow Golf. The casino will provide some alcohol, and we'll have food, a DJ, and glow golf on Keystone Falls. The 4th, we'll have a concert. The 14th, a car show. The 25th, Leadership Blair County Youth Mini Golf Tournament is a private rental. On the 5th of August, we will be hosting Laps for Liam, a fundraiser for the Love for Liam Foundation. The 12th, another leadership youth fundraiser, we'll be doing a dodgeball tournament on our basketball courts. The 18th, 19th, and 20th, the Summer Fest on the Lake, excited to have that back this summer, and then the British Car Festival. And then we close out our season with a concert on September the 2nd, and then the Out of the Darkness Suicide Awareness Walk on the 10th. And we will likely add an additional yard sale day in the fall because it was so successful. So with that, Skyliner is having a delayed opening this year, it is undergoing some very significant renovations. The high turn is getting about 90 feet of track work, one of the lower turns is getting about 100 feet of track work, and there was some other renovations going on in the middle. We have hired an external person to come in, help us with those renovations. So we're hopeful by the end of this week, but potentially not until the Altoona Prom because of the significant amount of work, and the rain last week put us behind probably about a week because they can't get up there when it's wet. So with that, I'll open to any questions that you have.
Any questions?
No questions? Just sounds like you've got a good year planned.
We do, we're excited.
Well, thanks, and thanks for coming to be sharing--
Yeah. Thank you for having us, we appreciate it.
We have a proclamation at this time, and I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Webster.
This proclamation is for National Corrections Officers and Employees Week, which runs the week that we're in, May 7th through May 13th. Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring public safety. And whereas correctional facilities across the United States are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession. And whereas correctional officers and employees are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safe and secure facilities. And whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors. And whereas correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor, counsel, and treat thousands of offenders, and provide offenders with direction, hope, and a new focus while assisting with reentry and life outside of corrections. And whereas each, although each of these dedicated professionals works in a different field and specializes in a specific area, all are committed to a common goal, the secure, safe, and humane operation of our Commonwealth's correctional facilities. Now therefore, we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Corrections Officers and Employees Week in Blair County, and encourage the residents of Blair County to recognize the vital role these dedicated professionals play in ensuring the effective operation of our correctional system in the interest of public safety. I would put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor placing the flag by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we certainly appreciate our 100-plus employees who have served in the prison, both as correctional officers and other staff, 24/7. Nicole, can you start us through the consent agenda, please?
Today's consent agenda is Resolution Number 220. It's the payment of five warrant lists as outlined in Item A. That does include payments to the following Blair Senior Services in a total amount of $110,117. It's the ratification of six warrant lists as outlined in Item B. It's the ratification of total payroll for the check dated May 5th, 2023, in the total amount of $834,909.33 in Item C. It's budget transfers in Items D, E, F, and G. It's requesting approval of an application for payment four for County Bridges 87, 88, 89, 92, the Box Culvert Project for Francis J. Palo, in the total amount of $81,932.9. It's requesting approval of application for payment number two to Ralph J. Alberino and Sons in the total amount of $181,358.10. It's requesting an affiliation agreement for the Sheriff's Office between the County of Blair and Penn West Clarion University for the purpose of student internships, and then requesting an internship Luke Jaeger for the period of May 15th, 2023, through August 15th, 2023, for 120 hours credit, no cost to the county. It's requesting ceremonial letters for Caldwell Banker Town and Country on their 50th year in business, and Judy Roberts for her vision and leadership for the Valley View Park. It's employments, resignations. I do have one change, or one addition to Item O, date of hire change, Nick Soto should say part-time at 999 hours. We're trying to break those out more specifically, since we do have the two classifications of part-time, so that is going to be at 999 hours. It's employment status changes as outlined in Items M, N, O, and P, respectively.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'm an aye with an abstention to the payment to Blair Senior Services.
The consent agenda is approved with abstention as noted, we'll move on to Item 4 on the agenda, and starting with A, Blair Dragon alcohol, and we have with us Judy Ross, who is--
Aye.
Judy, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I do want to introduce Amanda Humphrey, she is my new Assistant Director, and I just wanted to get an opportunity to introduce you to her also, she manages some of these grants. Today on the agenda, we have two grants. The first grant is the Pendott Grant, which is the grant that supports the checkpoints, roving patrols, aggressive driving, and safety around seatbelts and that kind of thing. This grant is going to be a three-year grant. If you recall, last year, the Pendott did approach us, and we also included Huntington Borough into this grant and Mountain Union. And so Huntington County, again, is included in the grant, and just wanted to make sure you were aware and still in agreement with that arrangement to date. It's a very small amount of money, only a couple thousand dollars, to their aggressive driving and seatbelt safety and other safety issues, pedestrian safety. If they don't spend it, that money can roll back into Blair County and be spent by our officers in details that we do.
Any questions for Judy on the first item?
Again, that is a three-year grant, and there is specific amounts for each. Okay. The second item is our intermediate punishment probation with restricted conditions. There's two items under this resolution. The first is the 2324 IP Plan, which there really was no update to what types of conditions can be used, it really was just updating the data in it, but it is required to be submitted with the grant. The grant is a $315,000 grant for the year, and it is to support our specialty courts, our DUI and IP sentenced clients that come into, offenders that come into that program. Under this grant, we support, has supported in the past, three probation officers. There has been increases in salaries, so there's been a difference there. We were able to capture one of the probation officers' benefits that's not able to do because of the increase in salaries. The addition also was last year, we added half of the drug testers that are needed to be able to continue to get our certification through the Administrative Office of Courts, actually Administrative Pennsylvania Office of Courts, I guess, or it's on the APSC, I bet your word it is. But anyways, last year, we had to, we lost a grant for that, we had put part-time, part of their salary in there, so part of their salary is still not covered at this point. So you will see under the agenda request that there's about 30-some thousand that won't be covered for those individuals, so we can cover them probably for half a year yet. So there would need to be discussion about where the rest of that funding will come from. This is specialty court, we did last year, reduce some of our items to support the inclusion of the testers, and so we kept those numbers the same this year. Those were in the area of the SCRAMP, and also under IOP, intensive outpatient. Again, a lot of these treatment funds under this, under the consulting fees that you see there, Medicaid pays for a lot of that, and so our office works really hard on anybody coming in the door, number one, do they have private insurance with some of your DOIs May, but also are they eligible for Medicaid and getting those applications? So a lot of the services are being covered through Medicaid at this time, so we felt comfortable with the numbers that we had this year.
Questions if you may want the argument.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll follow through our meeting on Thursday.
Thank you.
Item B, for the District Attorney's Office, joined by District Attorney Pete Waits. Good morning, it's District Attorney Waits.
Morning. District Attorney's Office is seeking approval of the annual renewal of our case management system prosecuted by Carpele. I believe it is an increase of $3,500 from last year to a total of $26,500, and as you can see in the breakdown, almost half of that fee is for hosting additional storage, which is something that Commissioner Burke, the District Attorney's Office, and the IT Department discussed as currently being the best scenario for the county with our data management issues. I don't know if there are questions on it, but I would--
No, I was just going to say that still comes in under the budgeted amount for 2023, so that's where that conversation led, was we did have that slight increase in budget.
We did have a presentation from our IT Director yesterday, and when asked on that, he said that it was comparable, again, that that amount was enough to cover additional charges, and actually, so we should be in good shape on that.
Thank you. I think in July, we budgeted for the worst-case scenario in terms of data usage, and it will be probably several years until we get there, unless body-worn cameras become more high-definition in terms of the resolution.
And that is the primary user of these storage space, to a large extent--
The biggest change in our discovery management over the last five years has been the addition of body-worn cameras to police departments, which frankly, is a godsend for prosecution, but the data management storage issue, it creates this kind of a nightmare, because for a simple DUI case, you might have five to 15 gigabytes of video just from that one DUI, that might resolve itself through ARD, but we still have to keep and store that video footage.
And that storage could be for an indefinite period of time?
Correct. I think we're seeing that more and more, as we unfortunately are still litigating, you know, cases that attorney consigliere or achieved convictions on in the early 2000s, you know, we're still litigating those in federal court, and we're getting discovery requests, for example, on the Miguel Padilla case, and I'm trying to work with the Altoona Police Department to get video that's on 8-millimeter cassettes or VHS cassettes, because the District Attorney's Office at that time did not appear to have any type of storage or retention for digital material.
Any other questions for our District Attorney's? Thank you, we'll take that to Thursday's business session.
Thank you very much.
Our 911 Center, Nicole, you're answered.
Yep, I can take this one. Last week, you'll, yeah, last week, you'll remember that we revised the application for the PCCD grant for local law enforcement, the sub-grant award as outlined on your agenda there. We did have to take it down from the original application amount to the 4.3 that we were, that was communicated to us that we were going to be awarded. Once we had submitted that late last week, they automatically turned over the approval letter, the authorization letter to sign for that 4.3 million dollar grant. million-dollar grant. Um, that does eliminate some of the Sheriff's Office items, which we will be, uh, discussing, uh, in office for, uh, possibly funding sources for that, whether it be ARPA or, um, we do have a little bit of bond money left or something like that. So we'll, we'll definitely make sure that this is a complete and total system, but at this time, I don't have any particulars. We need to get this paperwork in, get it signed, and then we'll go ahead and get hard quotes. And then once we know hard quotes and the number of, uh, dollars and the number of items we need, we can, uh, that'll better help us guide that discussion at a later time.
Question, any questions for Nicole? Nicole, would it be preferable that we take action on that item today as a primary?
Uh, we are getting, um, daily reminders that we do have reports that were due in March because they thought we were awarded in March. Um, so yes, we, we get daily reminders. I mean, what's two more? But sure, if you'd like to grab that four-point-three million today, that'd be great.
I will absolutely make the motion to request approval of PCCD grant, um, application. Uh, is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If you favor the motion, please, to the press, say aye.
Aye.
As approved.
Thank you.
Get that moved along.
Thank you.
Look to item D, Children, Youth and Families. Check and increase. Director, what is this morning?
Morning. Okay, first one is a request approval for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three renewal purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Justice Works Youth Care, Inc. for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
And I, am I correct in saying we're, we're taking this one off of our list? We're going to look for other providers?
This will not be renewed next year.
They've, they've not chosen the correct insurance for the county to be able to continue to work with them, so we are going to.
And we haven't used them for.
Utilize a different server, provider.
Questions for Tiffany?
Okay. Number two, I am requesting approval for the, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three renewal purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between Blair Count, the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Alternative, Alternative Living Solutions for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
You have to probably move on.
Okay. Number three, requesting approval for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three renewal purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Wardell and Associate, Inc., DVA Family Intervention Crisis Service Fix, um, for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And my last one, um, is requesting approval of, um, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three renewal purchase of service agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Evolution Counseling LLC for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
All right, it's great to see those, uh, current contracts coming to us now. This is, um, this is definitely progress, so thank you. We'll move to the Thursday's business.
Okay, thank you.
Item E, Human Resources, Dr. Catherine Swiger.
Good morning. I'm here with a list. The first one is requesting approval of what will end up being the mental health delegate policy and pay rates for the on-call or, um, call-in and backup delegate consultations for, those would be for three or two consultations for, um, in this case, we have agreement from UWA for the policy as well as the pay rate. The policy covers both UWA eligible employees in social services who do this, as well as volunteers who are not on our payroll. It's kind of a hybrid policy, but one nonetheless that the union has agreed to.
And this is, um, it's one of those items that we need, again, for three or two commitments, likely even for other things, and because this, uh, is effective today.
Now, yes.
I will make a motion out, uh, that we, um, approve those. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Discussion and questions. If there's a favor, the motion, please, to the press, say aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. We'll go about getting that incorporated with the other two folks involved. So then the next item would be approval of a grievance settlement agreement between the County of Blair and AVSME.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the grievance settlement. Uh, three minutes, or a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
If there's a favor, the motion, please, to the press, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Last one is approving an agreement of purchase, for purchase of professional services between County of Blair and Nygrin Training Solutions. This would be for the first of two courses budgeted this year for the management leadership supervisory training completed by Aaron Nygrin. Choosing to do this one for the June to October because we're still finalizing the roster for the October to February, and the roster size determines the cost.
Questions for Catherine on that? That was a very, I think, beneficial program for the county in terms of investing, uh, a little bit of money in our people to, uh, to build up those, uh, those skills that are not going to come in.
I agree. We're trying to get, uh, department heads and the next tier down, so the ones and the twos in all departments through the training this year and through at the last, it would be February, mid-February, two thousand twenty-four.
Is the roster finalized for this particular one?
It is.
Have we confirmed everyone?
It is.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, we'll move that to Thursday's agenda.
Okay.
Catherine?
Thank you.
And item four, uh, this is a nice item, uh, we have our benefit specialist, Brian Walters with us. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here because on April twenty-first, the, uh, Pennsylvania County's Health Insurance Cooperative Executive Committee authorized the distribution of fifty percent of the two thousand twenty-two plan year claim fund surplus to all consortium members. Um, we've had, County of Blair has had another successful year since joining P-Chip in two thousand eighteen, and our portion of the surplus distribution is four hundred forty thousand dollars, nine hundred, four hundred forty thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. P-Chip needs to know whether we wish to be refunded this amount by check or keep the funds in our P-Chip reserve account, or as a third alternative, we can split that and, and take a portion as a refund and put part of it into the reserve account. Our current reserve balance as of April thirtieth is just over one-point-three million dollars. Um, we had agreed in two thousand twenty-three that to keep a minimum reserve amount of five hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars. Um, so we are well-funded in the reserve balance. Um, in prior years, any mid-year, uh, partial distribution has always simply been rolled into the reserve fund in anticipation of that bad claim year that we've not yet experienced. Um, I went back and I looked at our performance rate. Yes, thank you. I went back and looked at our performance ratios since joining in two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen was our worst year, and our performance ratio then was only a hundred and two percent. We've come in on, uh, under a hundred percent on every other year since. So, um, we're doing well, and, eh, I'm simply asking, uh, the Commissioners to make a decision whether or not we want to continue, uh, adding to that, that reserve fund, um, in anticipation of the year that we may need it.
Uh, let me just, I, I serve on, uh, P-Chip's executive committee, and I would tell you that one of the wisest decisions I think the county made, uh, under the previous board of Commissioners was to go self-funded and move into a purchasing cooperative. Not only did we do that through P-Corp, uh, first, but, but through P-Chip, we have saved millions of dollars in our health insurance and still provide essentially the same, if not better, benefits to our employees. So it has been great. Uh, I did have a conversation, uh, with, uh, Nick Sevchak from Weber Advisors, uh, our, our broker, and, uh, he, uh, actually, he sent a quote he would like me to read, so I'm going to read the quote from, from Nick, so we have it, uh, on the record, and I'll provide it, Melissa, to you for the minutes, uh, as well in his form. Um, Blair County's health, the quote says, "Blair County's health insurance strategy has experienced financial success since joining the Pennsylvania County Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative. As planned, the county has built significant reserve funds over the past several years with P-Chip. This will allow the two thousand twenty-two claim surplus to be refunded to the county rather than the P-Chip reserve account," uh, close quote. And, uh, I couldn't agree with him more. I think this is the time to, uh, for us to take advantage of that, knowing, again, that we're protected if, uh, the years come. And we see this, uh, it's some, it just kind of goes from county to county. Sometimes counties have multiple bad years, perhaps two or three bad years in a row where there are, uh, where their claims far exceed, uh, their contributions. We, uh, uh, need to be prepared for that, but I think we, uh, we in fact are well-prepared for this. So the recommendation from Nick and frankly, for, for me, is that, uh, we take, uh, this, our first half of our surplus, which would be lower over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and, uh, to think back in the county. Questions for Brian, for me?
All right, thank you.
We'll move that on then, and just take that out in, um, Thursday's agenda, and we'll move on to item F, the prison, and Deputy Warden, Jay Wines.
Good morning, Deputy Warden. Um, first of all, it's, uh, our, our requests are like a two-parter, but first, we need to, uh, ask permission to, uh, rescind Resolution seventy-three, two thousand twenty-three that was dated February fourteenth, approving a quote received from Schultz Company to replace the rooftop unit number two, the exchanger at the Blair County Prison. Uh, it was later determined that they were not the lowest, uh, offer, so that was, uh, presented inadvertently and without malicious intent, but we did present it, and it was accepted, and we're asking for that to be rescinded.
And did you just want to may as well talk about the second year of the question?
The second one.
That they aren't together.
Thank you, sir. The second part was that we did find out that McCarroll's Preferred Services did have the lowest, uh, requested price for the replacement at thirty-four seventy-nine. I'm not really sure how we missed that at the first opportunity, but it was missed, and we are asking that first part be rescinded and the second part be accepted. It is the lowest bidder of three.
Questions for Deputy Warden Webster?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Jay.
And item G, Go-And-Maintenance, and Manager Jim.
Good morning. Requesting approval of the service contract between the County of Blair, Craig Fencing LLC, before fencing services calls at county properties at the time and material rates for working needing immediate attention for amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars at an hourly rate, materials make-up, et cetera, as outlined in contract.
Any questions for, uh, your deputies?
I just want to clarify, because it's, it, it seems like we're going to spend ten thousand dollars there. It, it's not. It's an hourly rate. There's, that's just the ceiling per call-out. The regular rate is a hundred and twenty dollars, the overtime rate is a hundred and eighty. Um, overtime rate obviously being outside the hours of seven-thirty to four-thirty Monday through Friday, so I just wanted to, and it, it is just a preventative maintenance contract that Jim is, you know, acquiring prior to meeting, which is exactly what we need him to do, so, thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. Second one, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Requesting approval of service contract between the County of Blair, Warrior Appreciation, Heating and Air Conditioning, to perform services calls at county properties at the time and materials rates for working needed, need the attention for the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars at an hourly rate, materials mark-ups, et cetera, as outlined in contract. And we did get that one, but it corrected from prison to all county buildings.
And those regular rates are a hundred and thirty-eight dollars an hour, overtime rate is two hundred and seven, and double time is two hundred and seventy-six. So we do, that will be nice to have those contracts for the cold of the winter and the heat of the summer when things seem to always break at that time, so we'll be ready.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to item H, Convention Center Boulevard, Route one oh five. Paul, the difficulty is, uh, contracting to be with great fencing for, well, the components. Um, if you're going to approve this Thursday, if you just didn't receive this contract in.
Seems logical, yeah.
Do you? Uh, you, uh, just do you have the spare power? Does he want to be able to?
It's, no, go ahead. We'll, we'll do it in order, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, requesting approval, approval of a proposal with service contract between the County of Blair and Engineering, Keller Engineering Services, for the design and construction service for the rehab of County Road one oh five, which is Convention Center Boulevard, through Allegheny Township, in a total lump sum plus estimated of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars.
And, yeah, I, I think I do, um, always. Never short for words. Um, this Keller contract is for the engineering, and Paul, I, I'm going to kind of toss it back to you a little bit to decide, to, to explain what Keller's going to look at and what they're going to draw bidding specs for, so it's not just, it, it's a little bit of everything on that road, so if you can talk about what they're going to address.
They're going to, to, uh, do the approaches up onto the Bridge eighty-six, I believe is what it is. But the, um, they're going to be doing bid out for the, I don't know, it's, I didn't bring my packet with me, but it's in the first column, I think, is what it's laid out, is what all they're going to be doing for work. They're going to do mill overlay, uh, new guide rail, uh, new inlets and new media in the middle, doing the concrete.
Yeah, there's also some wet line, wetland, uh, waterway studies, some erosion and settlement control plans, traffic control plans, utilities. Um, so really, it's, it's a complete overhaul for County Road one oh five, which, if you've driven on that, it's time, you're right. We're seeing some buckling in the median, we're seeing a lot of that, Commissioner Thomas etti used to always say, he didn't miss an opportunity to say alligator, alligator skinning on the, on the roadway, so you're going to see a lot of the, um, patches that we purchased this crack sealers last year to do, so you'll see that when you drive on that road. Um, you'll notice too, when you're approaching the bridge on that road, that you get the bump ahead of time and, and after, so all of that will be addressed in this, in this engineering plan.
I mean, it is the most heavily-traveled county road by far.
It is, it is.
And, you know, it's really a critical route for, um, for so much, for so many people, so.
Yeah. Uh, so funding sources, um, right now, I'm proposing to take this out of the ARPA funds that would be used for, uh, provision of governmental services. Um, there is some preliminary talk with our consultants that the ARPA funding, um, one of the other buckets may open up to be a little bit more broad for infrastructure, but for right now, that hasn't happened, or we haven't gotten word in the, in the frequently asked questions to, um, or the, or the guidelines to, to do that. So it would be under the ARPA general fund, um, provision of governmental services, which we have been using to balance the budget right now, uh, each year for, for the last three years.
Two.
Two, two budget years. Um, so that is where I would be proposing to take that out of, then the, the actual work, uh, once Keller has bid everything and inspect everything out, which we can talk about again, we do have, uh, funds building in both our liquid fuels and our five-dollar vehicle registration funds, and we anticipate by the end of, um, perhaps this year or next year, when it, when it's going out for bid, that those funds would be, um, in excess if we don't have the use for ARPA, if we can't use ARPA. Go ahead.
Because we have some options, so.
Can I ask a question? So is the, that, the figure there for three hundred thousand dollars is just the services part, the engineering services?
Yes.
It doesn't include any construction? It does not include any construction.
Which fourth they give you on that?
Yeah. Expensive owning a highway and bridges.
That's why we're always helpful, uh, thankful when Pendott kicks in some money, uh, but this one's going to be on our own since it is our road.
Any other questions on that? Anybody want to hear about it? Paul, Paul, do you want, while I should move on then to, uh, Bridge Seventy?
Uh, Bridge Seventy, requesting approval for a proposal. Bridge 70, requesting approval for a proposal of service contract between the County of Blair and Keller Engineering for the completion of stream monitoring services per permit requirements associated with Blair County Bridge 70, project located in Greenfield Township. This stream monitoring service, it's gonna be a three-year service. It'll be two years, this year, then two years after the bridge is complete, and the amount is not to exceed $7,500, and this service is required as part of the DEP joint permit issued for this project.
And again, that's another PennDOT participating bridge. Unfortunately, though, this particular contract falls under the county's portion of that, it was not included in the original because it is a county health permit.
Questions for Paul and Nicole? Take that to Thursday's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner's Office, Allison Stankovich.
Hello, I'm here to request approval to revise the 22-23 Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool P-Cor Loss Prevention Grant Program, Application Number Two submission. This was previously approved on Resolution 179, but we needed to revise that to remove the one item that was the body armor for the APO office because it actually falls under a category under our P-COMF grant application, so now we're able to use that money on this grant to add some additional door swipes for the various offices here at the courthouse, and that will revise the total grant amount of $13,000, I'm sorry, to $13,515.98, putting us within $100 of our total allocated amount.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Allison? Fine, we'll take that to Thursday's meeting.
Thank you.
Call Jim Poore back up for item K, Department Garage Air Tower Project, one of the most discussed projects by county employees and county history.
Requesting approval of change order number two received from Ralph Raynaud Sons and Corporate, and the increased amount of $2,700 to repairs additional areas of the existing concrete, the stair tower B at level 2A, precast concrete cast in place interface, and concrete topping repairs at level 3A and 4A, substantial completion date, June 9th, 2023.
Jim, obviously that's not a huge amount. I think my question is, when they say substantial completion date of June 9th, are they referring to the stairwell on Strawberry Alley, or are they referring to the project itself?
The information we got prior to this contract beginning, that beginning repairs, everything was supposed to be done by June 9th.
That was an already extended date once, and we do, they're sticking with it.
I'm sure whether you know engineer or contractor, but looking at it, I find out.
The preformed steps are arriving today, which is surprising, so.
Other questions for Jim?
No questions, but I do want to comment, this was anticipated. Obviously, there was areas when the stairs were up that we couldn't tell where there was falling and there was missing concrete. Now that the stairs are down, we obviously have to fix those places before we put stairs back up, so there could be, when we get the other set of stairs down, a small change order on that side as well, but we do, if you don't mind, could we approve this today so they can get moving? Again, we don't want to be the cause of a delay.
I'm sure as usual, the parking garage, as part of commissioners, won't have any problem with that, Commissioner Webster.
I would make a motion that we approve change order number two for the stairwell front.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And lastly, item L for Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and Melissa Harster. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. We're requesting approval of a proposal received from Auto Owners Insurance for a builder's risk insurance. This is for the Valley View Park Amphitheater Project, and it's in the total amount of $1,406, and that's for the period of May 1st, 2023 through May 1st, 2024.
Great, any questions from Melissa?
Which at some point we will, once that's constructed, be able to cancel that and see a refund of some of our premiums, so we anticipate not using the full 1406.
Thank you. I like this, item two there for you.
And then we're requesting approval of two allocations of the Park and Rec Reserve Account Funds, and the first one is an amount not to exceed $1,000, and that's to repair additional water leaks that were found over at the park, and an amount not to exceed $2,000 for the purchase of certified playground mulch and ball field grade sand.
Any questions from Melissa?
I don't know, Jim, do you need approval for the allocation for the additional funds like now?
Take that as one motion.
The first one?
Right. I would make a motion then that we approve the Auto Owners Insurance and the allocations for the Park and Rec. Did you want to do, I didn't think we wanted to do the car. Just, do you want just the money for the
Just number two.
Sand and
Just the items in number two.
Let's forget that and start over again.
Okay, that'll work.
I would make a motion then that we approve allocations from the Park and Rec Reserve Account for $1,000 for the water leak and $2,000 for the mulch and sand.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If it's in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's approved, and Melissa, we'll let you get to your third item.
And this is an yearly allocation request from CBRC to conduct the summer playground program out of Valley View Park, and it's an amount not to exceed $4,500, and that's for the period of June 12th, 2023 through July 7th, 2023. They will be closed on the 4th of July, and the program runs daily, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and they have a maximum of 15 participants and two leaders.
Been a great program for us to host with CBRC. Take that along. There's other two items, and the Thursday's business. Thank you, Melissa. Reach the end of special reports in business, and we have an old business, so we're going to adjourn at this time and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.